Much allegiance to the flag, the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We'll call that it. Here, Chris, and Schmitz, here, Peterson, here, Bush, Joe, here. Thank you very much. Call to order, six oh two. Meeting act is on the south wall for your reasoning and enjoyment as required by us to have it posted. Um, you're welcome to make public comments. Oh, this session is being recorded. Do you have anything else? Everybody get a chance to review the agenda.
Yes.
May I accept the August twenty first, twenty twenty four special meeting agenda. That's it.
Andrea, move. Can we second that we accept the August twenty first, twenty twenty four special meeting agenda? Any discussion? Sam, how are you doing?
Yes.
Andrea, can we, can we, yes, turn it, yes, motion, turn it. Reviewing action or priorities.
Go to accept the priority minutes for our thirteen twenty twenty four ready reading.
Can we move? Turn second that we accept the priority minutes for our thirteen twenty twenty four. Can we either read? Only discussion. If what you're saying from this room, Sam?
Yes.
Never, yes, turn, yes. Motion, Barry, Adam, all, watch your board. Thank you so much, Kimberly, for standing and praying and watch the whole thing.
Oh, wow.
I was right.
Well, not, it was, it's not live, so it's delayed. You did excellent job.
Well, I didn't do it. You know, she, 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 she.
They didn't have use for the gun.
They said so many. Tim, to you, I'm afraid.
That's why I saw a little bit.
Yeah.
My brain is coming out.
Yeah, because I can't fit anything with the gun, but.
Yeah, it can be reversed.
But they're not. So that is my public. Thank you very much. It was, I was, I'm having a concern, I mean, that you guys would do very, believe that. Our, yes, real bad. Right.
Coming for, that's okay.
Sure.
So if the good answer.
That's what I'm hoping for, what's happening. Smith. Left sleeves. The reason is, between this meeting. Um, we're going to do a ribbon training ceremony for the new playground. Um, at the doll fields, Friday, at five thirty P M. The reason of the evening is, it's not obvious, just, you know, better. For everyone, so five thirty P M this Friday, um, at tall fields. The ribbon kind of ceremony for the new, also for the new playground. We're going to check it tomorrow. Tomorrow, they're going to do the final walkthrough and cleaning. I think stuff down, not seeing them, just do that. Uh, they're gonna do their best. Uh, and then we will have a C R A meeting on Monday. The twenty sixth. New. For sub that meeting is so that they can approve the bond ordinances and documents before you. To approve that, let's say. And Austin Partridge from Northland will be here. So you can. That was it.
All right. Thank you very much. Do we have any other polite call? Dan? Burke? We're in the library section, we've used. If you have a question or something.
Oh.
You need to, or give questions.
Well.
Compliment. I would like to make towards the city, or the city council, I think, the library.
No, I was not, uh.
Pretty okay. Uh, in back in June. We had a hail, so you can. Related to some formies, I don't know. Things of, I, my grandpa, we used to make him send the four leadership and everything. And I have a lot of cousins that were born and raised, graduated from high school and everything. Perkins County, well, we had a family reunion back in June. So we had a lot of relatives from Omaha. Kansas City. Colorado Springs area. And, uh, basically, they had a date, but they just kind of walked along the town. And they couldn't believe what a small town like here. What the gosh. Small town like this. It's like, wow. It wasn't. And I know there was lots of controversy on the pool, and then. Oh, years and years ago, when, I remember the golf course, he sat the same.
Yeah.
And when they. At the money, there was a lot of controversy on that, and they just couldn't believe. Small town like Grant, you, they, uh. Then schools, they weren't able to go into the schools.
Right.
I walked around them, and like I said, they all graduated from Perkins County here, and kind of reminisced about old lives and. And how much the school has, uh. Run, size and, uh. Football field and, uh, everything. Just, that's. Very, very impressed.
Okay, thank you. Appreciate that. That's always good to hear. I think I might have been at that meeting. I thought. Yes, thank you. Appreciate you telling us. We need to hear that once in a while, especially in public. All right, moving on to new business, budget workshop. This for year twenty twenty four, I twenty.
Hey, ready?
Ready, you're not.
Well, uh, kids, thank you for being on us.
Yeah.
Yeah, we're ready for the workshop.
Uh. You know, we, we, uh, visiting with Lisa and then working with Jesse. On, I'm getting stuff prepared for this. We, we were a little bit behind. This year, getting stuff to the big count, but Tracy. Mentioned to me the other day, she said, don't feel bad. It seems like everybody's behind this year. Uh. A lot of people were very anxious, including myself, and I know Jesse was. A special session of the legislature just tell, and what they just enacted. Thank God it doesn't take effect until July one of twenty twenty five. They're taking effect in January. Who would have probably had to rethink. Processed, um, and, and a lot of it still left to be swallowed. Yeah, uh, we haven't fully digested what, what has been passed. But I'm a legal, you know, real job. Uh. Breaking that down for us so that we know exactly what's going to happen, what is going to happen, and how it's going to affect. Municipalities, our size, and our, small.
Then, will, will the auditors help us through this too?
Yes, and that was part of Tracy, Jesse. I, I stayed because, uh. Treeboard at two and then came back, so I stayed to do, do some work, and Tracy emailed us the draft. Miss, for the audit preparation. But she also said that. We're, we're here if you need help.
Okay.
So, they, they will be more than willing to help us, I think, but they will. Reach out if we have, if we have any questions, the league will be able to respond.
Does it look like there's going to be a lot coming up the pipeline, Jen?
You, you know, the biggest thing was a zero percent or greater of C P I. For. Growth.
Right.
Uh, so right now, we're, we're capped at two plus one. Or we'll. We changed that to the greater of zero percent or the consumer price index. How, they failed to state what consumer price index they were going to use as far as whether it would be a region. Whether it's, that's wide. Also, they failed to state when they would review. The C P I. There's still some questions left in the iron down as far as schedules, um, but that will affect. Especially the next one. So, we'll have, we'll take a really close look at that. But with the help of the auditors and the help of the league, they'll be able to kind of sound a little bit half. My question was, and of course, you know, they, they did the public comment online on tape to attend the hearings in Lincoln. Um, my question to that effect was. What happens when we're in a situation where we worked two years ago and C P I is almost? What happens in years that it's point one percent, we can't grow it off? Right, so they've really hamstringed us to go ahead and take what we can. And bank it for the years that are lower. It's not operation relief.
No.
So, but that's, that's my opinion. Anybody else, so, um, so we're, we're gonna have to. We're gonna have to pay close attention, and they've added another group. Just jump through.
So the budget process is gonna be long?
Maybe not longer, but definitely, uh, a little bit more difficult.
It's gonna be still the same layout. Much, because those cards.
Yeah, there's, they're still involving close part and all, but, but with the zero percent or greater, C P I or greater. Um, it's, it's really going to throw a wrench into what we can afford to do.
So it will be hard to grow your town.
Uh, it'll be hard to, yeah, to grow your base population, to grow your base tax rate down.
Sorry.
But neither here nor there, there's your, there's my soapbox I was on for long enough. I watched, uh, probably at least, maybe missed one or two days where they just convened and then adjourned. Uh, immediately, uh, but, uh. I watched all of it, trying to digest what I could. Jesse was able to watch the, the league, where else, representation of the league. What they were fighting for, they, obviously, we were against the zero percent or C P I. The greater, so. And the league voiced that opinion on deaf ears, so.
They're all being doing some. Different, um, stuff, studies and. Inform more information like when sales starts and sort of based on that. So, and they wanted to try to be as prepared.
Don't want you talking about legislation introduced that wasn't passed, but this is one that probably will come back up. I think they were close on votes, honestly. They're talking, they talked about taking a percentage off the top of local auction deals. They go back to the state of Nebraska.
They would take like our full sales plans, whatever, we opted for.
A percentage, a percentage. Descend a link, as property sales, or as property tax. So, um, and, and they had quite a few votes, they just didn't have enough votes to draw, so. I, I believe that'll come back in January. And so that's something we're gonna watch very closely. Out of the leagues, watching that very closely as well, so, I'm just glad it didn't pass now.
So they won't have to get rid of all themselves. But we don't send you the link.
Control, control, you're still gonna need it.
We're still gonna need it. So I'm just gonna get the percentage of a goodbye to the.
We'll talk to it.
To the state. So. Always exciting, uh, I was really hoping they'd just scrap the whole point, it's the first in January, but. It is what it is. Um, okay, let's get into this here. Uh, I will no longer talk about my soapbox. I think Jesse's probably heard it enough for me too, uh. All right, airport, airport, um. Overall, I'm gonna start with an overall picture here, so overall, I've got Lisa, I told you I can forgive Jesse quite a bit on this. Um, Jesse would say, hey, you're a little lean.
Is he a little lean?
You're a little lean.
He loves on a few things. He forgot a few things, so.
So let's, let's bump that up a little bit, so, um, thank you for that assistance. Um, I tried to go ultra conservative. Um. We'll start an airport here, um, airport is relatively simple, um.
And they're still basically paying.
Airport is one department that will, that is continuing to make money, yes. They're, they're continuing to put back into the general file. And that's good news. I mean, that's what we, I do for a little departments, um, that aren't required. So, big thing there is, we did the engineering study this year. For the little hangar recap, uh, next year, we will have the construction of the actual little hangar recap. So that's what you see in the capital outlay there. Uh, A W O S maintenance maintains their forty six hundred. Uh, one thing we're going to decommission is the non-directional D. It is no longer a success leave because of the A W O S. Uh, therefore, we need, we no longer need to spend that nineteen hundred and twenty dollars annually. Uh, to maintain this, so it will be decommissioned, uh, I've already informed the. Nebraska, suspension it anyways, so, I wanna think about that, uh, so, who works for that process?
That costs a little bit.
Yeah, I think this is our time if we want to take it down or really learn the glory or anything like that. Get our clear words for White Hut. It's right at forty seven, there, what's the White Hut? Uh, that's what a non-directional D is, uh, but thank you for your A W O S, no longer, should be that, I might also switch it when. Next Tuesday as well. An opportunity to pay China.
The rest of the, the mission.
And he was very thoughtful. Winning for us. They couldn't land and cook. Because their A W O S is non-operational. So they came straight to over, like straight to Grant. They had to, that was that, that way, that. State. Came straight to Grant. And landed and worked here. Because of our A W O S, right?
And there's a couple of farmers that come to Grant all the time, that are, that are pretty chill for our A W O S, too. They come from.
Our A W O S is pretty.
Business, yeah.
So, we lost this, yes, we, no, Sam, in short, in short answer, no. They're non, non-directional D, it actually just tells them about the issue. Let's just. The U S was giving safety. Crosswind, I think, uh, barometer of, of two hundred. All of this. That was part of the reason that we couldn't land more clicks when, like the lights. Well, because we didn't have A W O S, that information. Non-directional D is out, uh, limits.
We need to believe he, what, what it was. We not going to be commissioned, even.
I will ask, uh, Marcus, Nebraska Department of Aeronautics if that's a possibility. They will, um, start open down works for that thing, honestly, that's their world, they hate it, it's part of the thing, one plus nine hundred and forty dollars for. So, I can.
So, I mean, just. We gave that, so thirty six, sure is already there. Yeah.
And for everything. Wouldn't steer, turn on.
Yeah.
They, they missed the hard word. It, it would be difficult, that's, if you've ever moved it. Thanks, science. See, calculated an increase for insurance in there, uh. Utilities, uh, we were though, little white from our budget. Or their longest clients prior year, actual last year, come back to the twelve thousand there. Um. Wages, salaries stay the same, there's not a lot of wages we have out there. For F P O is, is. Amazing. Could run us for a better. Hope you don't get that position in riot.
Any, any suspects, terrorists, you'll.
Sorry, who? Well, it's the things, sure the lights are working. Uh, convenience store. Uh, we made lights, we rolled, don't recall. As well as wind smogs, hangers. Uh, yeah, these. These, he doesn't. What's, what's, you say? He, he, he's. So. So I think I mentioned four, but he's, he's doing very well, like the house. That's, that's the, it's, it's, it's. And it's nice to have someone loose on the ground, like some regular stewardess. He's out there pretty much every day, and that's place, he's extending air, or he's, he's a flight instructor. It's nice to. He's, he's quite, does a fantastic job of, of assisting us with getting the, uh. Careful of anger and violation, and, uh, that's. Even others. Perfect. So, nothing major there, uh, that's. Nothing really to highlight or to point out, it's very similar to what we had last year. Um, other than our capital outlay, it's gonna be four, four, two ninety, shipyard share for. Ship to front. That's a lot of cash.
See, through the next years, maybe it will help this energy efficiency and that to.
Part of that building, part of that building update is, is ongoing repair. Our guy in that building, so hopefully that correlates. Uh, their efficiency, very much philosophy. Uh, that, especially.
Yeah.
Any questions?
You guys?
Carol, very, very helpful, I can tell. So. Uh, okay, our club. I'm really just, I'm just, for the, uh, for the. Where we think we'll be at with our forecasted interest that we did this year. In, in two or three, four seventy three. Forty six for next year, the footwork, uh, we do have.
And we did budget all of the projects into the next year, because we listed, we know. If we're gonna get a bill in September and so shake all the shifts.
That project will start September sixteenth, the likelihood of us getting a bill, Thomas living, huh? Uh. This is.
Materials.
There's, our, I want to, I want to have a mission of, so, all of our, but, yeah. Right?
Well, we'll see.
We'll see.
You know, but go dry.
That's the best.
In scenario.
Last goal.
Yeah.
But nothing in C P G, this time I did talk to, to, uh, Amy to ensure that there was nothing moving, but, there she said. Um, C P G would be your own, I agree, brackets.
You didn't get a safer calling, right?
Well.
Really, because for all, but we were like sitting there every other week, and now, no. It's not really grants or anything.
Yeah, I agree.
Yep. Kind of figured it was that.
She started scrambling, because she's not writing a grant, her hands start to shake. All right, cemetery, you've already. You saw at the last meeting, we had to table it, uh, due to it not being approved. Cemetery Board has since met and approved it, regimented the same. Um, that will be on your August twenty seventh, uh, city council meeting.
Formal, of course.
So, uh, again, a balanced budget there minus, uh, a capital outlay, and the capital outlay is just in case of. There's something we need to put into that category, nothing planned, excuse me.
And then new wells.
At this time, new well is working, yeah, everything is, everything is operational with that. Uh, we'll talk about the income side here, um. No major changes there, we did. Try to keep everything the same, like, being conservative. Sales is one of those things. We don't want a lot of sales.
Right.
But if we get them, that's great, it's fantastic. Um, we're gonna be a little bit over what we approved last year in that department. Um, and then the other thing is our, our. Moody crop, I believe it was state this year, which we haven't received yet, which is not. Not. Not the ordinary, um, that's why you don't see that in the forecast. Last year, it was wheat. I think it's state this year, I saw the hay bales, I don't know. Um, and we do that on a crop share, let's say two thirds, one third, similar to what we get at the airport, you see, um, soy, sometimes it's soybeans, sometimes it's wheat. Uh, sex and has usually been either wheat or hay, so. Uh, and then on the expense side, uh. Talked about the capital outlay, um, our chemical and pest control, um, we are, we are doing full sweet out there. I picked up some rodent control for, to Cranmore, uh, that was not very, uh, and has worked very. Less droppings, we're, we're, he's getting full traps, so hopefully that, I don't like full traps, but. Hopefully that trend continues where they go into the trap and not into the hay or the airport. Um.
And what about the, the weeds that were such a problem?
At the airport.
Not the airport, I meant cemetery, so.
Back to the cemetery.
Back to the cemetery.
I, I know, exactly, and I moved back to.
I'm sorry, I, I was talking about. Well, not to, we're, we're, now, this very moment. You'll follow my train of thought, it's like a roller coaster.
Did, I bounced right off of it, went back to the cemetery.
Um.
She was trying to.
Uh, no, okay, yes, we are, we're continuing to work on the, uh, cactus problem. Uh, and I have not seen any thistles again after we dug them all up. So that is a plus, I'm not saying they're all gone, but. That was, that was a major for us, and then, and then continuing to tackle a cactus with spraying and digging, so.
And we're having to do some rodent control there also.
We, we did a, we had a, we had a friend.
You had a mole that was.
We had a friend.
For.
We had a friend.
This is so big.
Something that was digging tracks across them.
Well, actually, it, it dug under a foundation.
Yeah, I wanted to.
It's under a foundation, so. Um. Wanted to get, they did.
That would, they, we kept, so.
Yeah, they wanted to get squished, so. But, but so far, so good in that, in that area, um, we'll continue that same plan. Uh. It's a little bit stronger control for. The cactuses, what we have the dosage on, and we saw some resiliency this year, um, and we needed to combat. Um, memorial donations, matching memorial donations, obviously, have the insurance a little there, because it's gonna. Increase every year, it never goes down, that's unfortunate, um. The necessary increase for wages and salaries based on the guidance given at the last meeting. Nothing really out of the ordinary right now in that part.
Do you have questions for the cemetery?
Okay, right, C R A, which did see and approved at the last meeting, uh, C R A, thank you for that. Um, we obviously have our big project that we're budgeting for, um, with, with, uh. All of it being budgeted in the next budget year, due to the timing of the start of construction, which would be the twenty four, twenty five budget year. Um, if you look at the loan from the pool checking, I mentioned this before, but I'll say it again. Um, I know it was one twenty five that we approved, I put one seventy five in there in case we have to come back to the table for an additional fifty. Um, I think after our, our pre-construction meeting, uh, we probably will be asking for that, um. They would like to widen the paving of one of the streets, so. That seems, I have not got the numbers back from.
It came to me, he sent it to you. When you were in the meeting, it was over the fifties, so we're gonna want that.
Well, that'll be fine, because we have, we have plenty of pushing in the bond, so we'll be good. Um. And I have the bond documents from Austin. Um. Back to all of that, this three ordinances and one resolution, it's gonna be a lot on Tuesday. So. And then obviously.
Shumpert, coffee.
Good morning.
Bring your coffee. We'll have the two pots ready. Might be a reading tonight, but I'm ready. Kidding, I'm.
Well, we can take a break, then we can go get a cup of coffee.
So.
Whenever.
Anticipating, you know, two to three lots, uh, being sold over there, uh, win conservative on that. Um, and then capital outlay is obviously, uh, what we're gonna do with the project. Uh, contract labor, we will turn down two forty five Hancock, that's gonna be a contract labor there. Sorry, two forty five Lincoln.
Yeah, I knew what you was.
Two forty five Lincoln, I do that every time, I don't know why I feel straight to Hancock. Two forty five Lincoln, um, but the fire department has said, thank you, they've got plenty of useful training from. Two forty-five Lincoln, um, but the fire department has said thank you, they've got plenty of useful training from us. In fact, they just trained in it on Monday night, so. Uh, I said, tear down walls as, as much as you feel safe, or knock walls, or whatever you need to do, if you don't feel safe anymore. Um, and then our, our loan repayment from them. Uh, professional services, uh, that's gonna be between bacon and well as engineering and state fees for Ryan Diggs, and. Once the construction is complete, he will come back and actually stick the lots, lots well. For foreigners. Um. Real estate tax is gonna go up, where we bought three oh ninety-six, the cemetery property. Uh, that recently closed as well. And then everything else is the same in that department, nothing has changed since the viewing, since the first viewing and approval. That would be great. We can. Sixty thousand in the bank for one forward.
Oh, no.
There's a goal, there's a hope.
Yep. Really. Uh, shoes, I'll see right. Hey, that's.
Jesse.
Yes.
You want to do a service?
We are, we've reviewed the sales tax numbers again, so we decided we would. Go down to Tins, try to stay a little bit, sort of those things with that, so, um. By doing that though, then the sales tax, and we're starting to transfer more at the sales tax. Plus, um. How we did stuff, we, the first five years, we kind of took the. Amount to put it straight into project, since it was a fifteen now, it's a little bit, we'll actually go in there. Interest is accruing in sales tax now, so. And since interest rates have been very low, then we have cushion to, to. Fall back on to if we need it for this, or make it move on straight projects. If it's needed or something, so. Um, and then of course, it's just about our regular no payments, and there are no expenses today.
So, in summation, sales tax continues to do us a favor.
Mm-hmm.
Shopping local continues to do us.
Well, and when people shop on Amazon, it's local.
It is now.
Yeah.
It is now, but it, it wasn't that way three years ago.
Yeah, well, it has helped a lot.
So, yes, even though you may shop online, uh, you know, your Zappos, your Amazons, your Nikes, whatever. We are getting that sales tax. Which is very grateful, because it is, it has helped us, we, we started out at thirty, no fifty.
Um, around seventy, I think we were.
Oh, sorry, the amount we needed to budget for mom.
Oh.
Was it fifty?
Yeah, yeah, we started with fifty.
Started at fifty, went down to forty, went down to twenty, now we're down to ten. So, we're, we're able to reduce that, um, and you'll see later when I talk about it in general department, what we're doing at ten. Um, and how we're able to not increase, how, how the auditors are recommending, but we don't need to increase the. Uh, tax asking or the letting, we can give you the same as last year, and actually reduce a lot of anything. I'll get into that in general later, that's your red servicing content, very straightforward.
All right.
Economic development, yep, um, so not a lot changing here, um. Jesse, did I miss the zero on interest income, or was that because the amount was reducing in the bank?
That could be because the money's reducing in the bank.
As we transferred the electric fund over and now it's.
So I kind of reviewed that, so I think it's.
Sorry, I thought I missed a number, thank you, Jesse. Uh, right, right, continues to pay on time, um, and without, without reminder. Uh, transfer from the electric and the taxes, what we need to operate in that department, the twenty-five thousand is, is what you've. What you've said we will transfer.
Electrics for the downtown legalization, so. So, and there's still currently. That I have. We're down under thirty now, or we. Like, so, we still have some that was from that initial transformer, for downtown utilization. Has, has anyone taken up all that? It's, it's for us to, to like, yes, do it, or the improvements for like, anything that arises from. Hmm.
So, yes, that, that, that plays into, um, you know, if we do acquire a lot. We've got some money in there to play with, um, as far as starting up resurfacing, or structural resurfacing, or at least the removal. More than, we've got money under a few, they didn't speak with Dr. Cliff today, things are looking very well. Actually, I was very surprised, the amount of money he has raised, so he's getting very close to his goal. And, and essentially, I'm going to approach, I don't know about drafting a purchase agreement.
And you'll see part of that to the general. Do you have any questions for us?
Nothing, all of the, the employee, the health insurance, um, and the wages are all me. Those are, those are fifteen percent, well, that's.
All of it's.
Well, we're ten, those, those are mine, they just, it's part of the. Part of my position.
Yes.
But to answer your question, no, nobody has taken me up, I wish they would, um, I know, I know people don't like. Think. Uh, in the whole prime into their lives, because it becomes a personal document, it's on us and forth, but. We'd love to do some thought. Someone who want to upgrade their lighting on their home, or windows, or something like that. Don't talk to us.
Well, even if we got one, I think that would help move the process forward, if we got like a guinea pig. Mm-hmm. Because then other people would be like, hmm, why would you do that?
So, so low interest, low interest law, I mean, it's, it's. I think it's a good program, I saw other communities have success with it, so.
And you didn't have one, not even a nibble?
We had a nibble, I mean, but they ultimately backed out and shut up. Even though we said it was. Okay, public, their documents, taxidermy and all that, we're gonna be in power, so. People have, people are funding the departments.
I want to get.
Okay, on to electrics, um. Interest will be, will be much higher than that, than in the past, naturally, pardon me, as you can see, we are forecasting over sixty-one thousand dollars, almost two thousand dollars. Of interest as we collect this year, um. I've got a very good staff, one of my, like, last year, so. Twenty-five thousand, uh, no need to change our operating remains this time. Uh, as far as the income side goes, uh, the net sales tax, fortunately, strange or out of the ordinary, electric side. Uh, we get into the electric expense. And we do have the conversion of, uh, we're continuing to convert the pipe stream lamps, uh, marketLED. Twenty thousand for transformers, that's vision, which is obviously the largest portion of that, I got one each. We can do roughly twenty-five. Just twenty-four on Holland, like, before getting a lot of homes.
For me, that, we, we, we made, it, so they're putting in, we like old, but it's.
It's right, some of those mercury bulbs, that I'm for the. These newer LED days, it's not great, there are any supervision, but I think last, it's all the same sort of mercury bulbs there.
Surely.
Talking, I just replaced my water heater. I was leaving this, we're basically above the house. So that takes care of capital outlay, franchise fees, uh. They're gonna stay the same, we'll support that, stay the same, and we have sex with the electric revenue, we think will generate. Uh, that's ten versus two million, higher than what's on the other side. Uh, may not live that far, they can hop there, bring us, like, we're gonna be a little bit shy, not very, very shy, a little bit shy this year. Um, in franchise fees, but we may have a stellar August, two mil. I will tell you that the weather is playing. Sure. Running as much, these are probably not running as much, so we're not getting that, but which is fine, well, let's get it. I love it, uh, but just know for this, be a little bit shy on a franchise case this year, uh. Uh, obviously health insurance, and, and as well, property insurance, I'm planning for ten percent of all, those areas, I'm planning for a cross four. That's it, no need to beat the dead horse there, I see no need to increase the main, uh, power cost at this time. But we do leave a little Christian community seat, because their residency does not bring consumption of ours, um, they're. Six, sorry. Very painful to march, difficult to march, but here, so, little bit, little bit of room, room in case, case there isn't, this, this time, there's already increased for those. Contract, as well, sorry, the billing contract, I hope with once, uh, they don't have a, this is trying to do a step, I should say, this. Uh, they do a very good job, outstanding job, right? Can't say no good things about Nick Bless, if I call him, they're always careful, growing. Good, even when I have a transformer blows, in the middle of the night, you're a lot learning in the list, they have the right. Uh. Again, in the bottom half, nothing out of the ordinary there, uh. Transmission service, it's not, it's just a natural transmission, which, what's we think, what you see through transmission, a lot of. So, I was just. Main track fees, transfers for a while. It's seeing, no, this is not come out, for the. That's two hundred and ten out of the blue, franchise fees on electric is.
Cemeteries, the library, and.
They're all up together, it's that's. So, few, no parts of insurance, three thousand eight or thirty-five cents. And stop, franchise fees, that's just transfer out of the electric. I saw you, I saw you flip it, so I was like, I.
It's not bad, it's great.
Yeah, not important, say, anymore, I've been, I know, I'm. Yeah, thank you, yes, you're welcome.
First, you're still wrong, we have a team in my franchise fees, or are they? Yes, that's the state still troubling about changing.
We mentioned anything lately, I just thought that already, I know they've been.
Well, they, they've been asking more questions on our station, so we can go. Hopefully it's. Do you know?
Yeah, right.
If you have any questions, we'll be back soon. All right. Airport, the.
Central airport is, is.
But of the, it's our, you know. Then transform out, so the radio balance, and then it becomes.
But nothing good like four, one, two, three.
Yeah, generally.
Okay, now we're getting to the long ones. We take a whole page. Uh, on the general side, uh. We kind of got a little bit surprised this year, had a higher than I anticipated, permission speed. We'd like the franchise fee from Great Plains Communications, as well as Black Hills, uh, Black Hills, one set per trial. Right?
Right, so.
One set per turn, and then the planes is three. Three plus. It's gross revenue. We get any comment here? So, very interesting, it's, embarrassing to see where that goes now that Great Plains has moved to streaming. And it's not, I, I don't, I didn't know we were gonna classify it as.
They were already putting it in there, like, because they give us the detailed sheet, and I can be in there to learn, so. Wasn't the interest fees. They are different individuals who are then trying to decide which without saying, so.
So they don't have any backup cables, for those who use my great communications. It's no longer cables, now Great Plains, they TV, and it's fires. It's usually, Q, Q P I TV, for your fires. That's, you can see, especially the wiser. With, going to streaming, because what, there will be VR, there are TV, so.
Especially some of those TVs are really old, and what would you do with a little fire stick?
Buy a new TV. You have to buy a new TV, that's, that's.
Long as the.
Well.
Fact is, not lasting as long as it is.
Was true, it turned, I think, the other day, I was like.
At least it was a pretty color.
It was.
Was it black?
It came back, I meant.
You were meaning to watch those TV anyways. Well, the, the girls. So do we only get this from Black Hill, I mean, I have great plans, Black Hills is for the natural gas. Yes. But we only get it from Black Hills? Black Hills is the only, uh, distributor, distributor in the area.
They call me every year, and try to, other companies call me every year and try to give you the.
Companies all use Black Hills pipeline.
That's your choice, yes.
Gotcha, okay, I don't wanna make sure we, they need to advertise, and they'll do, hey, Black Hills.
Yeah. No, no, it's just, it's not, it's no difference than the transmission service for electric, there's a lot of people who pay, they come through that, through the main, uh, transmission line. Just like through the fiber.
Okay.
Just like dark fiber, there's many companies like ALO and, and, and Great Plains, and, and Altel, and all these other companies that pay to go through. The owner's line, whoever owns that, Black Hills owns the distribution system. So no danger there, but if it was, I would say, no, we need to.
Advertise.
We need to have a public advertising campaign, or, or switch, we're getting a franchise fee from one or the other. Uh, because I know I'm not wild this year. Prefer another supplier, you mean? Um. Okay, continuing on, sorry, I derailed there a little bit, um. Nothing out of the ordinary, I'm gonna get straight into the taxes then.
Well, we do wanna touch on. Did we have something then for the grants and bonds, we did for the, the memorial and donations, that's what is setting there. Tracy said to put it in this fund, if something were. That they would donate the funds, they'll run a tree. Was that what the memorial donations was for, speculation on what?
Yeah, and any other memorial donations that somebody would look for them.
Going through the general. Oh, so like, uh.
I can say.
Right, or when we get them, when we got the material at the park, the musical material, or musical instruments, was that not where it was run through? It ran through the park, correct?
Ran through Park and Rec Memorial and donations, but it was very, it's the same concept, yes, yeah.
So, yeah.
Stay good.
So, so that is why there hasn't been anything in the past, you know, or, or just. Okay.
Um, maintenance localization will go up, and that's straight from the state of Nebraska's calculation, um, that they provide to us. Um, and then, yes, taxes, so taxes, um, it does look like an increase from prior, from, from last year. However, we're reducing the debt service fund, so the total amount of taxes asked are still three hundred and twenty-six. Or sorry, three hundred and thirty-six, which is the same amount we asked for last year. And reduces the levy again by almost a full set.
We have three twenty-six written here, but three thirty-six?
Because you add the ten thousand for the pool.
No, it's three twenty-six, because it was three sixteen last.
I'm just, I, I confess that total. I said total, three hundred and sixty.
But ten and the two sixteen is three twenty-six.
I'm talking about that, plus, well, it's three thirty-six. So. If you.
Thousand that we're gonna have.
Yeah, we're gonna have three hundred and twenty-six, of general, the total is three hundred and thirty-six.
I see what you're saying. Now I'm heading in. You were, you, you've not rang, you can.
Which, which, which is a recommendation of the auditors, and, and they don't see the need to take the full. Amount that we could take this year, which would be three hundred and forty-six thousand. Uh, three hundred and forty-six thousand, if we took the entire amount we could ask to without getting a postcard, that would increase the property taxes and, and increase funds.
Well, what's that?
Yep. Uh, into the expense side, um. I'm planning a little bit more in the uh vacant uh program for uh the. Area we're going to do. Plus. Uh, if you remember, we had them do the worksheet on. The prior offenders, so we're, I'm planning a little bit more in there for the repeat offender program, as well as our. Our last section in this rotation. Uh, we will. After we complete. This last section, I will find a. Clean hat in my office and we will start drawing, so you remember that whole conversation. Advertising and printing, it's again, it can go either way, and we've had some, some really good. People at the newspaper. Then we've had really, really poor accounting, newspaper, so. Um, we think fifty one twenty will probably be getting ballparked. So the maintenance, we, we need to start thinking about uh doing. A review of our code, then I know you gave me the nose, I'm starting.
Let's make code done first.
First and foremost is. The zoning ordinance, but keep it on your radar that we do need, it is time. We do need to have a review, but this is no different than. Than going out for RFP for the auditors, going out for RFP for the instruments company. We, we need to, we need to go over our code looking back. Nothing major in their grant expense, we talked about that. Sleep, the. Loans to the CRA I talked about with the additional fifty that they come ask for. Professional services, we've been hovering around that fifty five number on average, so I think that's where we can stay. Things that uh. We have some oddities, you know, in there with what we do each year, so if, if we do a little bit more, it's gonna cost us a little bit more, but. Fifty five has kind of been that average, historical average where we've been at since. Anna has been our. Attorney.
Well, if we do code, we're, it's good.
Well, we're first, we're gonna do the, we're gonna finish the zoning ordinance, so first of all. And then I just wanted it on your radar that we need to think about. And it's, it's time, and you can put the nose up, because I, I don't like doing it either, but, but it is a necessity. The rest of it is, is not uh. No, nothing out of the ordinary, wages increase based on the calculation that we're given, or the, the guidance that was given to me. It's operating registration act, we are budgeting for that, and we believe that uh based on the last conversation with Amber. And the West Central Attorney Phil Pierce. They are ready to present it to the West Central Board for their approval and adoption, which fits well with their timeline now. Because they're, they're gonna be winding down with nuisance and they can actually develop. Uh, the, the pamphlet. And all of that. To send out communities, to let communities know that this is a new program in the world. It is in there, so when they're ready, we are gonna be ready. In fact, we're probably gonna be a step ahead, because we've, we've got some, the, we've got the ordinance ironed out. Uh, in, in, in promise. Professional opinion, so. And we'll note also that um. They, they had their first court case. Bobby Pettit is doing the housing study for grants. Uh, in the lander, it's actually the, the higher, sorry, Southwest Nebraska is the hiring agency. They hired Bobby Pettit of Fiber, we're planning to do, to do the housing study for the state. And that's so we can get real workforce housing. Uh, on that location in. But she did say that they had their first criminal case and there was, they, nothing brought up against what. Slovak law and and. And disagreements, not to say that that won't come up later. Um, but at this time, if that was not, they were suspicious. So there, there is. And they're gonna probably continue to be cases. And that's helpful for us. Does, because that'll help on a guy, Rushing wants this, so she, she knows how to tend it.
There you go. Any questions on Joe?
This might be the third or fourth time you've seen this one. This is the approved. Uh, I'm version, firstly approved, I might add. Andrea and I attended the last meeting and they did earlier, so this is the, this is the inked in final flow here. They did not have to come back to us because you guys included the franchise fees and what they're not. Budgets. This is their changes, change that they made was the memorial donations, so that they can funnel the uh library foundation funds through that. Correct, Dan? Thank you. And had I. Be burdened, I guess, Dan, if you had anything you wanted to mention on, on the budget or.
Not. Anything come to mind?
I will, I would like to also make note that uh Lisa and I met yesterday, no, no, Monday. Monday? Yesterday?
It was yesterday.
Yesterday, sorry.
I had a hard to remember one day.
It was today during this week. Yeah, and Dan, this, this will be news to you. Um, but uh. Lisa would like to, with, with. When we get to, to it uh. To do the water fountain and the lighting project. For capital improvement in their budget, and was, I couldn't get quite within here, grace enough to you. Uh, but she would like for the city to fix that.
Now, that would be, that was. My recommendation of the, which is flipping back to capital improvement. Which would be the water fountain will place the inner lighting. But if you guys refer. We can do a portion of the dust renovation. And also to most.
Those were, those were sort of the rankings we got when they went through their process was the fountain. Lighting project, book drop repairs, which I know Robin is working on and she's got hot going on, the school getting started back up. And summer programming, adult reading, lighting up. Um, so don't have a, a solid number of the book drop repaired yet, or what needs to happen there actually. Uh, to get it repaired. It has not leaked in a while, so it's. I think the water fountain and lighting project. Uh, would be very prudent and very helpful in the long run, um. In keeping that building. Ready.
I wonder if that. Any questions on water? Any, anything come to mind, Dan?
Appreciate. For that. The library.
Or if the council prefers, we can switch that. To the, you know, whichever way the council wishes to go. Right? Watering.
Straightforward, you made your hair. You will have a keen request. On the twenty seven. Fifteen thousand dollars. I'm just gonna get a refill. How about you? Wait, political.
She'll take sleep aid after after. Going to my. These ones to make sure my anger and the ice of my. And his mom. She's like, she took it and she looked down and there was a blue pillow on the floor and so she's like, oh, I messed this to make it as well. Not good, about. She's like. Can't really sleep back. Stay awake maybe longer and then she's like, what the hell would you tell me? She says, well. Oh, I was. True. He don't care why he would see. When I put it in her room, I was. I realized. Well, when we go on trips, when you like, but it's, it's title on it. And then asleep then, one container to take them, right? Right? Done this twice, he's done this twice, we did not learn it from the first time. So he. So the sleep babe. And was having trouble, you know, being away. And during the day and I'm like, oh my gosh, you just took your son, and he goes. You took some title off, tired, but like, ready, you, you mixed up the title all, but with your sleepy. He did, he's done it twice. I did him first, he's a nice girl.
The usual, but feel sorry.
Yeah, but I did.
All night. What did I just? Tell me the full taste. Yeah, it's very nice, I can taste it, I go, I don't know. Taste it and I didn't break. Then this will taste, you put it in your top?
He takes his medicine dry. He does not.
Okay, make up for that opportunity, I just like to re- refresh, so it was sort of last stop here. Pretty close.
Pretty exciting.
Yes.
And how much is the whole like?
We, we need to have a better understanding is. This, this three person every year. So start, close like anybody else. Or otherwise.
Wasn't the one year that chemicals were extraordinarily like?
This year.
That was.
Well, I mean, they, we. We got pretty developed this year. Uh, we've got. Got a lot of suppliers in the area before. In fact, of course you were about glory to cave for this, maybe?
Maybe it's higher than. Hey, so this is still alone.
So. It's, it's supply, it's, it's. Retaliation, but we're, we're trying to do this. We need to hear. We, with the adjustments we made, even though our priorities went up, I think we've got to do a little more concessions department. That would turn over us and we are anticipating having a tournament next year. So uh. If you'll see, you'll see that sort of reflected with this year plus what we make over the term.
And we did increase.
Being. A lot of, you know, less, uh, less other teams in the tri count. But so. Let's. What's Imperial and Oval and certain sessions. I'm for the rest of bonds, we can come and pay. Expense side, uh. Memorial donation, same thing. Food fees. Food fees have started to trend down a little bit the last couple of years. We, we think we're gonna be a little bit up this year, yeah, I think that's problem in. It's all. This happens. Oval and. And like start for Imperial. We're. But I think we're not. Wouldn't be too common, it's very.
We're checking two years old back, right?
Yes.
Then we're.
Which is to be expected, you know, the. We're. Do appreciate the nice thoughts from out of town people. Kid that's family. Out of town as well, but she can comment about. For days that I quit. Fourth of July. Uh, so most, most comments aren't this. Don't get a lot of. It's, it's. I didn't. Don't make sure for forgiveness, we had an opportunity to uh learn it thoroughly and and see what her thoughts were. She thought it was good, you know, there's. Spot of college students, colleges. Such first year, we were in the classes. First year, a little less third, fourth, they're good jobs where their colleges are. You know, they're not that. You know, we're good. Sorry, Sam. I think it's terrific, I think Britain's, which probably gonna, especially those first two years, the kids will want. They can still come back, but maybe they just need to do one.
Daniel.
Yes, yes. And then. Talk a little bit about it, but it's going to stand in hand with the. Protocols, I am anticipating us. Obviously, the first closing. Parts were in the park. Sunday that we were open was right after the chase game fair, everyone was tired, I get it. It was warm enough to open the pool, but it wasn't warm enough actually. Comfortable. Free to four, there was. Hopefully, this weekend. Jesus. So sorry. Long, chill a little bit, because that's kind of hot, kind of the heat, a little relaxed, chill. We've got a lot of companies stopping these, making attempts.
Right.
To stay open, please.
Definitely, we know the community.
So, and you guys, I was. We're supposed to work hours, all that. Thank you for staying open. It's definitely well received. It's a lot of tech. I, I told Brady, let's, let's do. Brian, he's kind of big. Brian, you think? You think of plans, you can't think of it. We'll do one to six on both of those days. We'll see how we do. I think we'll probably have to get an additional two barrels to consider August 31st, when Eric thought, but. Um, that's. maturely, really. Another hundred gallons of chlorine was. Um, and hopefully. You, you know, we're using municipal supply who, who we get quite a bit of supplies from actually, as far as plumbing sewer and water and all that goes. And Bruce, uh, Bruce, that, you know, we can, this is our second year getting chlorine for that. Would like to work out with fixed rate with them at some point. Rather than just getting snowballs and order it. You know, a lot of the chemical companies do that. Uh, when you order. So, uh, he was gonna look into that and get. Just so we didn't get, oh, it's eleven percent increase, it's. But part of the problem is that we, chlorine is fickle. Um, even if you store it inside now with sunlight and loses potency sitting in the barrel. So you, you kind of have to get it at the moment. So we try and get what we think we can use, which is about twenty barrels at a time. Before we need to make another order. So it's, chlorine is fickle. Regardless of where it's at, if it sits out in the sun, it's even worse. Capital outlet, which is fine, you're on cheat. In the back. That we'll get into. Some of that memorial and donation fund was, we received this year, fifteen thousand, what you saw in that. On the income side and the forecast. What, I just, I can't say enough good things about that. Well. That, that project. Doesn't happen as quickly as it happens without those kits. And their forethought, say, hey, let's do something in the park. They could have done something with that fifteen thousand dollars anywhere. Right, anywhere, that's school. Could have done an upgrade at the school or something, I mean, that would have bought some really nice teachers or something, I don't know. Um, but, but they chose.
Oh, yeah, we just signed the.
To put it in. I mean, yeah, those, I apologize, it's gonna do it on Tuesday, but we can do it right now.
So Andrew, did you sign the thank you notes too?
No, no, you guys were.
You guys. So those are the thank you cards for the Perkins County Community Foundation, as well as Nebraska Community Foundation. Thank you. Thank you for signing those. Very. Very generous, so. They, again, the kids didn't have, they could have picked anything and they picked. But that's, and, and a project I wouldn't think kids would pick. Thinking on those same things. So they, they. And they picked a local contractor to help them. They have no coating, plumbing crap can, can start to, it's gonna do. A resurfacing and it's, it's more of an epoxy than this paint. So it should last a lot longer than paint. So. And then, uh. So they, they, they can only afford to do it in front of the band show, but there are additional benches by the tennis court, and then I think two or three benches over by the playground area and swings. Thousand dollars, of course, do everything all at once, so we're not. Probably piece it together. And then, uh, basketball court, tennis court, resurfacing and fence, uh, that would probably be all in to fence. Around the tennis court, which is much needed. Um, and then involving the park restrooms and renovations for ten thousand. So all good there, I think that, uh. All of those were good, good choices and, and applaud you for, for assisting with those. On the bathroom renovations, I think are probably on the, on the forethought of everyone. Uh, that was another big community outcry, so getting a fresh coat of paint. Uh, new stools. New shingles and then two new. Porta jons. Handicap accessible porta jons. Uh, will go a long way. With sort of saying, hey, yeah, we're, we're invested in this, just not. Hundred fifty thousand dollars into something we don't know.
It was just split parts. But that will be good, because I think what's there, besides what I'm living there. The bathrooms are gonna be used more.
And I did confirm with, uh, Superior Sanitation, formerly Scotty Potties, that that weekly. Planning would not be a problem, they're in and out of the area. Going one direction or the other.
And then we would just need to. Or maybe put a sign up, it says, you know, help the city of, do you need? Call them or something, so we can.
Yeah.
Yeah, especially outside of the ball season.
Yeah.
When there's no games going on down there.
Just something that. Cause there will be.
Hopefully. Please treat respectfully. There's not going to be a delivery. Uh, we talked about concessions, um. Contract labor, we are going to be painted the black ones last year in the pool, this year the white gets painted. In the spring, as well as, uh, side slide maintenance. And I think it's some attention as well. Some of the, uh. Abrasive surface on the top has started to peel off.
So up. Did we have a little bit, but it occurs more true of the ball too.
Yep, we have four, four. Four more, two more, we'll probably only get two done, but we have that to hit for four. And that will be the, the last of the trees that were marked. The last time the tree board surveyed the. And we just, a very, very good tree board meeting that Andrea will give a very good report on Tuesday. So there's your suspense. Um, and then. Talked a little bit about pool chemicals and where I think we're gonna be at in order to continue to August thirty first. Supplies and repairs, it's sort of the average, um, we were sort of an oddity this year. Um, out of line there. Uh, utilities, don't expect an increase in that. We didn't increase water rates. And then wages and salary based on the. Bags I received at the last meeting.
Any question?
We will be having a grant run through.
The tree had come through, more than enough. They haven't done the official press release yet. Chrissy emailed me and said we were awarded, but they haven't done the official press release yet. So there, it's something called, the tree board calls it a super grant, I pronounced it super. Uh, cause it sounds closer to super. But it's S U F R and it's, it's the, it's a program that they use in Eastern Nebraska. A tree removal of ash trees. This will be the first ever grant money. In the state of Nebraska for tree removal. No money has been given for tree removal, it's all been given for planting and. Maintenance, not, not even maintenance, sorry. Just planting, just planting, that's it. And, and, and the, and the supplies necessary for planting. So this, this is huge, this is big, 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 big.
So we need to get those mesh trees out.
Thankfully, we don't, we haven't identified any emerlass porch yet, but they're close, we know they're close.
North flat.
North flat, yeah. So, but. It's a really good program, I'm, I'm, Doug was, one of the tree board members was saying, we, he knows, just a little bit about it, so.
Police, thank you, won't you, us not having to run that?
I would also make note that, that, that there's no increase to. Their contract, you know, this year's.
And it did drop because they do a human scale hole for us and they usually keep that human the same, so use. And then, uh. Adjust then. So that's why. It does look maybe a little.
But in, in contract to contract, there's no adjustment, it's just big. Yeah, and actually, other than last year's adjustments. Of three percent, there have been years prior to that where there was some adjustments as well. Thank you, thank you Perkins County Sheriff, please don't.
We have to have our own department, oh my god. I can't, I can't even imagine like the equipment. Millions of dollars just to get like set up.
If you wanted to know more about that, you could talk with Jen, he will tell you all of his hard equipment.
Sales and use tax.
And it's just that we're. Having what we are forecasting this year, we did have that little anomaly.
Have they taken it back up?
No, I called the.
You got this huge meeting.
We emailed the. State auditors, we called, we told me that, you know, subcontracting, she emailed me back. Um, and said that it is ours. But she can't tell us anymore and it was being like. One time of restricting, so not to expect it going forward, so we.
So maybe they made a mistake on theirs.
They've had it in the past, actually.
They took it first.
Yeah. You know, right, that's what she was trying to get, um, kind of figured out, so. But, um, so. That's why we're still trying to be conservative with that. Especially then, what structural is. And then, of course, for that service, we have matching floor wiring for the pool. And then the street department, we're doing the armor coating. So we're not taking as much for the armor coating. So that we haven't banked for a bigger concrete project when needed, so.
We're gonna.
Yeah.
In the street, and where I guess some problem just to. Say it when you were doing it.
Yeah, all right, any question on sales and use tax entry? All right, sewer income. That's like where we're gonna need to be.
Not, not a sewer. Not at this point. Uh, sewer is one budget right now where. We are able to maintain our fifteen percent fiscal policy and do so without an increase in, uh, weight in the rates. And it is probably Jesse, correct me if I'm wrong here, one of the easiest departments to do, because we know the collections are pretty much gonna be what they're gonna be, it's kind of fixed. And, and the outcome of sewer expense size is very easy to calculate, so. It's, it's one of the departments we can back into and figure out, okay, where is fifteen percent? And where do I put that money in expenses?
Trying to do our annual maintenance and stuff so that you keep, you have an interact.
So a lot of that goes into, like Jesse said, with, uh, cleaning and janitorial, where we camera and the lines, do that. Uh, we finally got our. Prior. So I, we're casting, it doesn't. Do that. But we will, we'll, so you're. And so on and so forth, clear access by the hour. So it's just, we tell them, okay, we got next nine dollars to spend. And I'd sound for like, yes. Some lines are versus using up, she can go out the head for a bruise. Uh, extraction tool, where they go and cut out bruise actually. Um, I don't think that's the. He also does fantastic job, I think it was needed to say. You know, you guys very well made these sewer lines and. It's, it's largely through part two of this program. And it also. Assist us in the event of. Make adjustments. So it's a thing, it's a back end of your ball, you know, both the gun records. Camera records, records. Um, they even do it online. Cloud based, uh, system, which is very nice, it's now we got simply a C T. It's C raw, it's cloud based, and you can do it online around, if they're done. Pretty cool. Scripting you. Two hundred forty feet from the panel off the street. Exactly what that camera's view rate. The hospital to review it as well, he was telling me, but it wasn't, well, it's, it's spoken a lot. So they do, they do a really good job.
Okay, our capital outlays part.
Yes. We'll get into that, capital outlay, that's one third. One third of the year to us. Bye, Dan.
Oh, and then when they run out.
And we normally then retire, graduate, so I'm. Over to thirty and that's. So, and then they just put it with my at work, he's to go, so we started going to see where it was.
Some highlights on here, the, the life of yours. Uh, Michigan's team. You know, franchise meetings, we're not, we're not gonna displace. Uh, and a lot of things happen. Not change for next year, like apologize if you speak. Uh, Jesse corrected me, thank you Jesse. Um, you're happy. But you're smiling based on, right now. So we have, we have an hour for you, Andrew. Therefore. Money for, so figure, they, you are, you recall last year, you have. Too small of projects, but still, so.
I know, it's the life of the street, I.
You would have to tell us why they have, you would, why we didn't. We saw, this guy.
It's not that.
Your grasp was sudden.
It's just a sprayer and a gravel. So here's the yellow highlights of your.
Good stuff.
Cleaning and janitorial, that's. Storm, school, drive, street. They were, they get very.
Yeah, we still have the ones that are the slowest driving.
Started working on this, yes. Started on the.
Those streets we were.
So you may, she's not, no, she's not in P D.
But yes, so we, we officially, all the streets we've owned, uh. See that. Five year lease for a new machine. They gave part of, because it's the ours. This is, this is my brand machine. They're going to give us, and in fact, we did do a new, a new rector day machine. Our piece payment would be more than it is now. Made no fiscal sense to me, I think. And apparently, primary driver of the street super. Uh, that's why. The else. There's no. That was favorite there, the recent thing, I'll be hiring this. The Ohio. Anyone special? Well, on it. Grooms. So. My opinion, there's no need. To go out for the machine. Own this machine comfortably for another five years and never read about it. Spend five years, so no, thank you. Our good piece of airport as well. She's super out there, that's. Smith is the edges. I can come by and sweep those if he's off. I can come by and sweep those if he's off. This year's in the web, so we're gonna do it. I can get out there. I'm going to state why it before we were going. Fly in to make sure that. The biggest problem there is the. Big things there were that. To note was something contrary. Aren't you an issue of the way she's located? That's the same what's going on well. For issues, so I'm basing my percentage increase off the actual. But. I get about. That's okay, we have the forty.
We're gonna be something that.
But we've got a little cushion.
Need a question for straight. Waste.
This is the department that the auditors continue to say you might wanna think about a rate increase however, we do have a healthy cash balance. They they sort of. Retract their comment.
But how close are. Reach the fifteen percent margin?
We're consistently under. Margin right now. But again, that's. The caveat that with the cash balance. And you've got you've got a good cash balance, so if you didn't have a healthy cash balance, there would be a necessity for for me to say. Let's take a look at weights and rages. We we wanna increase our our weight waste. Rate. Lot of Rs and Ws in that.
It's been hard because we haven't had our whole person in for a full year and stuff to to get a good. A good balance on it too um. So I think we are getting closer to the.
And the dump truck's gonna be.
No, yeah, we'll be getting closer to the garbage truck. So yeah, and that might be when we decide that, you know.
We hit another year.
But I hope Tracy will also promise for recognition.
We're gonna do that study too, right?
So the benchmark, yes.
So she'll keep recommending on that, but. Yeah, we don't really wanna keep seeing not making anything, so.
We're in close to trying to do that.
Yeah, and and like Jesse said, a lot of that is is due to to some uh employing consistency. In there, you know, when when we've got to have our two. High paid employees running a trash truck.
It doesn't make sense to build a running attraction.
So but we had. Um or we had, we didn't have a trained employee. Um but uh. That being said, I think in in build with that of this and this would. Eric has spent time with him now, so that gets on the right track and he feel like he's long term. In fact, he made mention to them the other day that him and his significant other wife. So to me, that says. It's a good luck. So uh. My employees looking for. Dumpster repair in there um. Bill actually did a. Inventory of what we had and we moved some stuff around, so. Twenty one mark which we're at.
Oh, sure.
Yes, the twenty one mark which we were at the last year. Um I don't think we'll get our dumpster dropped this year, only because I. We had, we did have enough good. Uh that may not always be the case. Um as part of what I church is not with, once he gets into that train full time is. Is completing an inventory and and saying, okay, that's seventeen cans that have holes in them. This can no longer be repaired. Yeah, we're falling apart. Still. Still the child or the description there.
Now, um so this informed the possibility of having a second.
Uh I talked to Ken Comentor about that, um about having a second one out there, he's very hesitant. And what happens is you get two half full. Uh dumpsters and then he has to make two trips.
Can we can we do it more often then?
He can. He cannot. We know I was looking at the purchase. Uh the string show and having someone do that. But I I did tell him that we would still like. Even since I've been here. Actually, we need to at least try it again to see how it goes.
Yeah, cuz how long ago was that?
A lot of times he just if he's got like a long weekend or something, he'll go and put a stack around there and he runs. One available to him, so that there's two. And so I mean, he kind of knows probably first.
Doesn't doesn't the county pay for half of that?
No, we pay for all of it. I only paid for three separate trailers. So and we're hoping to get the cameras into effect so that they help some.
So what is the cameras really there for?
Uh for capturing license plates so that we can uh logically prosecute. Literists and uh. Users of the. Non non city residents.
But I thought, and I think people are definitely under the wrong assumption that that. Anybody can dump out there now.
No, oh no, you be. Pay or utility paying customer.
When that's the problem.
Do we need a sign up there?
Well, we do. That's very. I had a number of people to. You know, tell me, why did we not have two out there, especially since the county people. Can dump out when they do, then people do not understand, so what can they dump up at the dump there?
You do the recycle.
See, I do not think that people understand this, I mean. No, and not negative that they don't know, I don't think they understand. What we really can can't, cuz I think I've been asked by at least ten people why we have to have cameras. If we can spend the money on cameras, why can't we spend the money on another. Out there to be dumping. And then at the same time, I've had at least three people say, well, the county pays for half of them, why does it matter?
And it was very confusing when that all went down.
So the county's only.
We did articles, but.
For the like the washer dryer type stuff?
Just just the household and cardboard. Right now.
Okay, people do not understand.
Right now, the other metal trailer. Kid is just pulling and he's taking.
So then, yeah, I would have to say without a sign. How can we really even prosecute?
The sign is out there.
Yeah, the sign for roll offs that says it's not S four city residents only.
It's pretty big.
Right.
Did it say you will be fined, non residents will be fined?
It does not. I don't have a fine structure.
The best thing is, I don't know, I just think that's very tip cuz I I have many people.
I can do another education piece, I've done several on the roll offs um. Over the course of the last twelve months on Facebook. We can go back.
So most of people really out of the town out of the town is just.
Hardware, newspaper, plastics. Is it, I mean, if the county you're interested in, we can we split the cost of the county?
We we talked to them at that time and they didn't want.
Well, maybe ask them again, tell them a lot of people from the county.
Just doing this, and so it's like we don't. Maybe not have to do that. I guess what they know, but it means also it's like, well, then, you know, they start getting, people start getting fines, they can say, well, can we offer counties?
Yeah, cuz then that would give us a.
Yes, and another roll off off and they said no, so. No, we didn't wanna have.
That's good, I just thank you for the clarification cuz I think that I know. And and they've asked me and I've said, no, that's just for city.
So I would ask them that first, then if they say no, then I think we do probably have to come.
Yeah, there there's a fine structure, but it's. Just up to the five hundred dollars. Because it depends on what they are.
So there's no like first time, second time. It's just up to five, so we can charge five hundred dollars every time? Or hundred dollars? Obviously, we don't want to charge anybody anything because we don't wanna get any of that money. You don't want that to be exist like. And and they do, the guys on the regular tell me that they turn people away, you know. You'd be surprised how many. Know about it and.
And there's nothing against people. Flotering in it and taking anything and everything out either. The other day I was out there on Jim dumping grass, there are six people in the dumpsters. Standing in the dumpster digging through through. Out and putting it in the back of their truck.
That's that's been. It's that's not, has not been a problem like. It's just seemed like lately there's been people at the metal and down there digging through.
Which and there's nothing against sending their. Wanted to clarify that it's okay for them to.
Sucks for us cuz they usually throw stuff out.
But if they throw it out, then that's literally. That's where the cameras.
We have the one in place at the entrance, I'm just waiting on the camera, the the. License plate one or at the actual roll off.
Thanks for the clarification.
But I will, I I'm more than happy to do another education piece and put it back out there, so. And I will talk to the commissioners on whether or not they have any interest in sharing the costs. For that, so that the county could use it. Anyone in county could use.
Do you have any thoughts on on this? That's the one thing that, you know, we may need to increase to help with that problem, cuz that's a big problem. And I think Ben and I spent an hour like trying to come up with solutions and they're really. Okay, if we gated it, people would just dump it outside the gate, I mean, just all sorts of ideas.
Yeah, I was saying, it's just gonna end up in all these.
Or to make it worse to clean up.
Our community deals with it. We're always trying to find what community has to move some and actually last thing were.
Yep, so if anybody.
Cameras seem to be what everyone else is relying on as well. Um I will tell you, the poor the poor real estate. And there is a slew of stuff in front of their gate every single.
But I don't, yeah, I don't think that I guess. Yeah, and then the expensive gating it, it's just ridiculous, and then you're gonna have more. Public work by what they're picking up trash when they need to be doing something else.
And before we started the roll off, people just would go and dump. I mean. And then the guys took all day, he's normal dump truck torn out. So we had no.
Cleaned out a big, and then, yeah, I think we're missing Tom on actually. E structure or fine structure. But up to the Nevada and then. I think weren't that long education piece, my personal people. It it works for a moment, I do it, you know, the guy's telling me, oh, you must have got some Facebook ads here, so. There's no trash on the outside of the roll off.
And can you also include that that it's a contract? Roll off, it is not, it's not city, uh it's from the city. So that they realize that this is an additional expense that. You know, we have to rely on this person's schedule, it isn't something that we have control. And you were really thankful for it. We could need another person to take care of it.
There's not a lot of.
Yeah, it will, we have a. Waste connection once. And it's not cheap, but they charged it for any and or about and yeah.
That's something. The approaches from any angles that this is possible. So that's. It's it's pretty. We always struggle with collections cuz we.
We'll be enough years to kind of try to get a better.
So, you know. Historical data, you know, we we've been over five hundred thousand. Think we're gonna be around that four fifty number next year based on. Far as our basically. And Jesse. Hundred as well as far as the semi conservative, we always wanna be a little bit more conservative. On income versus. So. Interesting that we talked about that sometime, it's not gonna be the yet worse. Jesse, on the sales of water.
They all when we do. Work on. That's sometimes when we when it's first apart, they can't hide any foot outs or something.
And then the special assessment review is for the north water.
And it did.
This part that continues to. We had to audit with the.
I still wonder.
Need a replacement, I know it seems like we used it, but.
Forever. So, yeah, I I know it was nice that you did it all at once.
Then I was gonna break down all at once.
Ceasing to operate at the same time. So suddenly. You know, we don't have to buy it all at once. Um into our inside here. Uh capital alley is the. Whatever leaders or.
So that's where that fails.
We need to have my man. Just so. It's actually not too bad now, the TV. That's where our business goes down, I can't remember. Honorary increases here for insurance, health insurance, uh, any long peace water interest and water loan offer, that was provided to this base bank station. They suffered a lot last two projects.
This year we have one team in front of the loan and so eventually we'll have two over two, so that buys a little bit of air.
Using your interested skirts and getting your principal wise.
No, if, uh, the water loans, they break it off, and we get half. Uh, that way, yeah, that's, uh, but of course, our water loan was also that we just had established is fully, like, fully, you guys, about that, you know, true, so again, break.
If COVID. You can see it very often, um, and then just nominal increases in 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 facilities, uh, we sorry, we're what I have now, our water, our contract, we have twenty twenty five, twenty twenty six, going back up to the core water contract. They they come to the expression, whether it's planting, whether it's the rawer, it's robot it, uh, and they'll, I think we need two, three years of tracking, yeah, so they do a new expression as well. We have a, um, the water tower.
Well, we can just schedule for painting, that's why you set it up, so that you it would be easier to write the standard videos, so. Uh, and of course, technology is really advanced, because we were just having a dream, that's uh, most part, they weren't, they didn't even cite it, or they're doing it for what a technical.
Any questions on water?
It's the last sheet I have, um. Any questions at this point on the budget?
All right, we're just moving on, we are done with a action and discussion on studying the proposed twenty one four task, we need to do the the, um, couple outlay.
We can, can, I apologize, I may have put that out before I spell grace for that. Thank you, Lisa. So the the changes in there is what we talked about, um, the uh, armor coating, um, and the library, um, adding the actual dollar figures into those amounts. Uh, and then based on Lisa's recommendation myself was the water town project, you know, lighting project, I mean.
So is that something you guys want to do, or would you guys rather do the sub direction best?
Our our talks on the circulation desk were, uh, fifty fifty, so that uh, suggestion would be made that we would put up smoothly five hundred dollars. Do you think, you know, five hundred dollars to fundraisers or donations? And cease, uh, circulation desk would be completely removing, it's currently there. They're redoing redoing that whole area to increase efficiency and workflow.
And more storage, they're wanting more storage.
More storage, yeah.
So, initially, when I had the conversation with the board members, Rob, or not Robin, Renee did not feel that they needed a circulation, then at a different conversation that when Robin talked to them, um, she said it would help the patrons because they would be more efficient by having a better. I mean, I don't see that, that's why I'm recommending the water fountain and a lighting project, because I I do know for a fact, people stop off at the library for more than just library needs, they stop off to get a drink, they stop off to go to the bathroom. You know, the kids come back and forth from school, so it is also used as a like a community stock. I don't know how to phrase it, so, um, I did agree that the water fountain, the one they have now does not work, so they then they go into the kitchen and get water from the sink, which is.
Is this one, one of those that fills up your.
It would be a lot of shows just.
I just, two thousand five hundred is a rest estimate, because she was not able to get, uh, stuff from the contractor.
That's roughly what we paid. Uh, the other caveat that I might add to that, Lisa, is that, uh, those first three projects were the priority of the board, and the circulation desk was the priority of the.
Right, so it would be reversed for the staff, yeah.
Just to, just to give another layer of of thought there.
Was that how you remember the conversation?
And then they said the book drop prepare, obviously, we have no number to even work with there, but no reset water, we came over issues, so.
So.
I think what I remember what it was is when it's very windy from a certain direction is when it leaks.
We did a lot of work, now it's got the clean out deal, so it should helps, it has better overflow, stuff, because, but most of the damage might have been before that had happened.
Yeah, and 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 what it was is is having, we may some couple of brickwork found and saying there already is the ground and cut point that needs to be done, um, as well as adding a drip edge over the book drop, um, to combat that side and why they're ready, as well as what needs to be done in previous years of damage, there is no signs of mold or mildews, there's nothing to worry about there, but but there is some water damage. But I I did have a number on that, yes, this, these are the numbers I have right now.
I think based on the fact that, that's just my opinion, but based on the fact that good give the money and know that the project will get done. Set aside the money and they're not able to raise the other half, but circulation desk, we may it may sit there and not actually get done this year.
I think the sense of.
So I guess I challenge them with when they have half, what is known.
This they can do, I think that just seems to make more sense, because if it's not going to be done this year, then us budgeting that and setting it aside, we could have done something else, doesn't make the most sense. Feels to me like we could, uh, more community impact with those person too.
I think, I think, uh, injury, you know, I had there is by challenging them, saying, hey, we're ready. Seventy five hundred threshold, then we'll match. You gotta have that money either in our bank or, you know, wherever, you gotta raise it first, you gotta raise it.
Yeah, yeah, we gotta see a receipt.
Oh, that's how Western's cry is operating. Trump, we have no idea what cost, and I know you don't, so there's no way to prove that, so. Water fountain and lighting project, six grand, I know it's it's gas a little bit, but so cheaper than two hundred, with, with, and I don't know, six grand, six, purchase six grand guarantee versus basically, they're two hundred.
Right, and and then actually, the fifteen thousand is it has a gas, because that quote is a euro.
Not too, not too, I think they're right now.
So I think.
Great, that will match it. Up to like, you know, obviously, they won't log me desk and that kind of stuff, it might have like. Yeah, they were going through corn husker, which is a prison, uh, a prison manufacturer.
And and it gets very nice, solid. It's not. You can make a.
Sure. Yes, I mean, if we ever needed a little bit of storage, that that's where I would go.
Yeah, it's a pro, it's a good, it's a good prison project, it really is, it gives them.
Teach you some of the trade that.
Yeah, hopefully, then it's twice.
I would recommend, I guess, to us just putting on the agenda for Tuesday's meetings, so you guys can improve, and is that additional funds to the library, probably is what I would assume, I would like to see from my.
Okay, can we just ask you to do that?
Where are you at the, uh, anything about? No, I I. I did, I did talk to Rick, there was a, there was a miscommunication, that's that's definitely his regard. We'll have something there shortly. It's, it's, and it happens, I know they were, they were sort of busy with their budget timeframe, and I asked them. Um, now we're busy with our budget, we have two committee budget time timelines, so, um, we'll be back on him for now, so. Just a miscommunication, they happen. We'll get that back in order.
Any of the capital, other capital outlay that we need, anything you need to finalize on the capital outlay, decide if that one, that's the only one we do not have members on, but.
Yes, you are correct.
Anybody have any question concerning that capital outlay? Kimberly, you're thinking with this heart then, no.
Like inspiration, I don't know, it's.
Okay, now to the best part, no, let me email or don't think we saw.
Okay, so as some of this, you can see, you'll be able to go back and make sure that my member, Brad, on the franchise fee and transfer comparison sheet, um, we did get our valuation in a very timely manner this year, so I say thank you to the county for that. It's very appreciable. May not happen every year, but this year we did, we did get it in a timely manner. Actually, when Jesse called me on Friday, I was like, what?
County's been very good.
We got it, I'm like, okay, thanks for trying to bring that back, so I can do, so I can do the most. So, um, the the two pages there, the one is obviously the franchise theme and transfer comparison, you can see at the bottom our current tax asking levy, if we keep the same, if we keep the same tax levy, sorry, if we keep the same tax asking, and then what Tracy has amended, um, as well as, this is the action post. Sorry, sorry, the postcard formula, this is what I put all those numbers into to determine, I'm right, postcard, yes or no, and it actually calculates a yes, and then it turns everything red. So, um, that is the maximum amount we could request, three forty five, six eighty fifty two, which is what we would have.
Almost two it.
So, um. So, um, if we keep, if we kept the same tax levy, uh, with the reduction in the tax asking to the, for the pool bond, um, and then shifting that to the general tax asking, so we were to reduce the total amount of tax asking to three thirty three and have a point three eight nine oh four five, which is our current tax levy, so that'd be less than what I calculated we needed to have in the general fund and that Tracy also recommended. We kept the same tax asking, so if we do the three twenty six, the ten, and the three thirty six, based on the current valuation, that reduces our levy, and that is the recommendation with Tracy and the auditors, um, it reduces our levy down to point three eight zero one nine four. Current levy is point zero three nine zero four five, um, which is about a full cent deduction in the levy. And it does not ask for any more in the overall property taxes, which in this climate, I strongly believe.
And we do take the max this year, it did increase the levy.
Increase less.
So they 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 recommended the point three eight, three six eight eight seven nine?
Um, no, point three eight zero one nine four, so you have to go all the way down.
Oh, yeah, okay.
There's no increase to the property tax. Still asking for three hundred and thirty six, which was the same as last year. Or sorry, this current.
And I think last year we improved it by a tax. And I think we break it out to the general and whole, I just was thinking to some.
Two years. One of your pandemic and. Just made, but but I'm saying, close to to. Understand that, we could go by, or no, yeah, or I guess I don't know. Stan, fix the pistol response, though.
That's just, they're, they're.
That's really one of the people, it's really not. So you gotta hold that, I think, I don't think it's necessary.
We need to lotion.
We can do that as a set, setting the total tax asking. But then, do we need to stay the tax levy?
They, we just last year did the general tax asking. Maybe if I'd say with the total, that's, that's probably.
Make that motion for. For leaving the rule, are you approving? Make a motion. Set, thank you. Tax asking of three hundred and twenty six thousand, with a full tax asking, you know, ten thousand for a total tax asking of three hundred and maybe six, which I was.
Reset, the general tax, general tax, five, eight, three hundred twenty six thousand, full tax. Thank you. Excited about.
It's not on the agenda. But take it home, it'll be on the Tuesday agenda for the first reading. Uh, we will not use two agenda, I have to see, because we are not to see two percent, so.
So. This was a whole. Actually, discussion. Skeen to. But we're exceeding two percent because of our joint. You're actually. We have anything else we need with this? We're gonna do that eight, well, then we're. From the end.